Meeting of the CDBG Advisory Committee was posted on or before Thursday, April 17, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item number two is Oral Communications.
I don't have any cards. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak at this time? No? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to item three.
Item three, Business Agenda. A action items. At one is a motion to review and approve a revised fiscal year 2014-15 CDBG funding allocation plan by funding category.
Okay, I have a report.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee, thank you again for your time for this special committee meeting. We did have some unfortunate news regarding our funding, which we had to reconvene the advisory committee for some funding revisions that we provided the committee to review and approve. The original CDBG entitlement that we thought we were getting from HUD was $1.7 million. We felt that since there was no sequester, there was no take back of funds from Congress, that we would have that funding secured. Unfortunately, in April, we were advised that our funding actually was reduced to about $1.6 million, almost a 10 percent decrease in funding from what we originally estimated and what we have made our funding recommendations on, the February the 21st and 24th. So what staff did is to develop a proposed revised funding plan, taking into consideration the reduced funding, and ensuring that the recommendations from the advisory committee and the priorities from the city remain in the funding plan. And the funding plan does take in consideration some recommendations that the advisory committee made at the end of their meeting, which requested staff to look at if there's any additional funding for priority projects. But I'll walk you through some of the changes that we encountered. As you can see, the original entitlement was about $1.7 million, reduced down to $1.6. So the total final entitlement, CDBG funding plan, including our program income and our unappropriated fund balances and reprogrammed funds is $1,746,630. That's our total amount that we have allocated towards the projects. And we did provide you the details on this, but I'll walk through the seven changes that our staff recommended for the advisory committee, and one being the reduction of CDBG administration from $349,000 to $325,000. Unfortunately, that's a statutory limit, and we had to reduce that to $325,000. Second is looking at one of the city CIP projects and reducing that, which is the Palmer Park Improvement Project, from $342,458 to $252,530. And intent was not to impact the nonprofit-funded recommendations, and we left that at $330,000 so that does not impact any of the agencies that receive funding from the CDBG Advisory Committee, and we reduced the city's Palmer Park project. Third, the city's Youth and Family Services Program, which is a city social service program recommended for funding that $10,000, was reduced to zero. The city, the staff, felt that we can use some departmental funds to operate the program this year and reevaluate it for next year. So that left basically a balance of $4,000 in the CDBG social service side. And again, according to our records when we did our motions and our deliberations last the 21st of February, it was recommended that any additional funds that are received, or whether it's a cut from a project or someone not utilizing their funds, be utilized for four existing projects. Those were Ascensia, Catholic Charities, Armenian Relief Society, Glendale Youth Alliance. Again, those were the homeless case management program, the homeless prevention program by Catholic Charities, the community outreach program by Armenian Relief Society, and the youth employment program by the Glendale Youth Alliance. Those all received $1,000 in extra funding, would essentially balance out the project, again, without making any significant impacts to the social service programs besides a program being cut and a reduction in administration and the capital improvement project for the Palmer Park project. Those are the recommendations that staff would like to present to the CDBG Advisory Committee, and ultimately for submission to the City Council for their final approval on Tuesday, May 13, at the next joint City Council Housing Authority meeting. We did have to postpone our previous meeting. We anticipated, I think it was the 23rd of April, we were anticipating having a meeting, but because of this, it had to be delayed.
Sliding meeting is on May 13 at?
3:00 PM.
3:00 PM.
3:00 PM. It's the Housing Authority and City Council meeting.
Okay, questions?
I have a question, and for your benefit, a couple of us were at the meeting where the public hearing hosts our initial discussion on these sorts of funding recommendations, Mr. Chair. And there were some organizations present, but there did not seem to be anything contentious in terms of what we were recommending coming out of our working session back in February. I do have a couple of questions. So the allocation of the $4,000, which seems like, first of all, let me say thank you for the staff for finding a way to make this all work. I know it's not an easy thing to do, and I certainly appreciate the efforts that staff have done to reduce from their own budgets on the city level in order to provide some level of funding to our community organizations. So I did want to recognize that effort in case it wasn't clear to people what has happened here. So thank you for that. My second question is that, given the remainder, which is this $4,000, these four organizations that you have outlined, that is based on the prioritization that we are giving in terms of what those organizations are working on?
Committee Member Armenian and Members of the Committee, yes, that was the priority that the CDBG Advisory Committee made, and it was actually the motion that was passed by the advisory committee that we seem, sometimes we do have extra money, in this case, we necessarily didn't, but it worked out that we did have some funding after we cut one of the programs. So it was actually a motion made by the advisory committee, and it was based on some priorities that the committee felt were strong proposals, strong programs that would be able to utilize extra funding.
My second question, thank you for that. My second question, I guess, goes, and I do thank you for reminding me of the motion that we made at the last meeting. I guess I start, I do question a little bit when it's such a small amount as $4,000, and when you end up spreading it across so many organizations, that $1,000 ends up being a really small amount. And so, you know, what you kind of get in terms of bang in return for that dollar becomes kind of lost in the accounting of it, if you will. So I just wanted to throw, so I'm not against staff proposal. I understand you've kind of followed the instructions we gave, actually. But I guess I am throwing out there a thought about, you know, would it be more meaningful to take, you know, take the lump sum of $4,000 and give it in one direction so that it has some sort of impact? And maybe it's one of these organizations, but maybe it's one of the other organizations. For example, you know, CASP's had put in for like $43,000, some thousand dollars, but we only gave them, yeah, almost $44,000, we only gave them $15,000, right? Now, I don't think that $4,000 will mean they're all of a sudden going to expand the program into an additional school. So I'm just throwing that out as an example. I'm not proposing anything right now, but it just kind of, the thought occurs to me that $1,000.
No, it's a very valid point. It's a conversation we've had a number of times in the past, best way to use the dollars, though.
In terms of priority, you know my priority was the last time, and that is with the CASP's program. I think it is, it is the, one of the most beneficial programs that we have, and it's also a collaborative program that we work with the school, with the school district. And it's a wonderful program, and I wanted to see it funded more than it was. And so if you're going to make changes, I would take the $4,000 and put it there, but it's fine with me to leave it the way you recommended. It's, that's your practice.
Are we bound to the motion, first of all? I guess that could decide it for us right there. No?
No, I think that's an open subject for discussion if we want to go that route. I want to say, though, that I was not here, unfortunately, during the original selection process. I did review most of the tape, and I certainly concur with the decisions that were made by the committee. I think, I think we're all on the same page. I'm prepared to support what's been presented in front of us, but if there's an alternative or somebody wants to make an alternate motion, I'd definitely entertain that also. I do recall CASP's a year ago was not funded. So we, or two years ago, I want to say that, two years ago. And then last year, the committee reviewed it again and decided to support it. So if we're going to go have this conversation, the question is, what other options are there? I do want to mention, too, that on the audience, we have few other organizations we see on a regular basis, and we can actually safely say that your numbers are not going to change today, because it's been recommended, I think, that those numbers remain the same as were decided by the committee back in February.
Right.
So I just want to make sure you all know that, because I saw you all coming up to look at the numbers. So, no, that's.
Unless City Council decides something different.
Correct. As far as our recommendation is concerned.
And that's a possibility.
Always a possibility.
So does anybody have a, Moises, you have a comment?
Just to comment, Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee, I understand the, certainly the flexibility of them when they adjust the funds, but again, I think, going back to what the discussions were, yes, $1,000 doesn't look like it's a big difference, but for these particular ones, it does add extra hours for what's called the case management, the staffing. CASP, on the other hand, is a full allotment of funds. $15,000 will give you one school. $4,000 won't necessarily give you more services for that school. It will just offset what they may be adding into it. They would need another $15,000 to add another school for that, so $4,000 isn't necessarily...
$4,000 would just offset fundraising that they have to do for that single school, probably.
Possibly.
Probably $15 doesn't cover. Does the $15 cover a whole school?
Can't they add more students to that, that school?
No. They're limited by this, the psychologists can only take so many.
Right.
At a time. So it doesn't increase your number of staff versus.
Capacity.
Capacity, correct, versus the other agencies where, again, after discussions, what adds extra staff hours, these go directly to staff. Again, the reason behind the committees, and I had to review the tape again, because these questions did come up, and my, my understanding from the other committee members who weren't present, it goes to direct services, which was why the motion was made. And again, that's just the background of the history of what was conveyed.
Do you know what, do you recall what CASP's cost is for doing the program in one school?
It's about 15 plus. They were adding, I believe, another $2,000 or $4,000, maybe, for the director. Again, that was in-kind services. So again, it doesn't add towards the number.
And they proposed for 40, they pitched for $44,000, that was for multiple schools.
Multiple schools, yeah.
Which is usually the case with that group. I think somebody in the audience might want to speak, so can I open the, is there anybody who wants to speak at this point? So I'm going to, I'm going to open the oral communications momentarily.
Question. I noticed that the four organizations are receiving additional $1,000, and I would like to know, and we are not one of them, and I would like to know what was the criteria, was how they were selected to get the additional funding and not us? That's my question.
And I think that's the subject we were discussing. Moises, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as I understand it, was based on the priorities that the committee is looking at as far as frontline safety net programs that provide direct case management to, direct services to lower-income persons, and those being, you know, GYU, ARS, Social Services. The other one was Ascensia and Homeless Prevention. Those were, my understanding, reviewing the tape, going back four hours, discussions of why the back and forth was going towards these four particular projects. It wasn't just at the motion, but it was during the deliberations, at a time when you had to make some very difficult decisions, and cutting these four programs back to fund, actually it was fund CASP, to fund another project, so that when funds would become available, it would go back to where the original cuts came from. So it was not just during the 10-minute deliberation of the four, but it was the whole history of the cuts, how they were coming from.
So basically, you're reflecting the general consensus of the committee at the time, and if we wanted to change it, it would be here, that we would, that's why we're here today.
Absolutely, yes.
To consider options, and/or we go with the recommendations of staff. Hopefully, that answered your question, Mr. Correa. One more person?
Ruben Gorgian, I'm with CASP's. What CASP does is dealing with youngsters to adjust them to proper behavior. What we do is, at each school, we have three 10-week sessions, which cost $15,000 plus. So in case we get additional funding, we can go to another school and proportionally can do the same service. It will not be, say, 10 weeks, or it will not be 30 weeks, but it will be proportionally to the amount of the allocation. I will appreciate that.
Question.
Sure.
So what would $4,000 do for you?
Okay. Rather than going three 10 weeks, we will go one 10-week in another school.
It could do it?
Yes. Yeah. The program is a 10-week, 10-week, 10-week.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak? No? Okay, we'll close oral communications again. Any further comments, deliberations, motion?
What do you think, Carmen? Thank you.
Well, you know, I'm not an expert in this area, so I don't know what, maybe the person from CASP's can answer this, as to whether, you know, what sort of impact will that smaller proportional program?
You say smaller, you mean $1,000?
Yeah, no, I mean, the $4,000, what would that?
Which is what it, I think.
It's going to be, it would be a proportionally smaller program in a second school, though. But, okay, how many, what sort of impact would you make with that?
The number of students will be the same as the whole year, 30 weeks. But regarding effectiveness, it will not be the same as it was for 30 weeks. It will not be the same as for 20 weeks, but it will be for 10 weeks. The effective, in some cases, the kid can just turn around in two weeks, and in some cases, may not have, I don't, I won't commit myself that it will be turning around everybody's life, but just, yeah, it will be, there will be an effect, but it will not be a 30-week effect, the same as in 10 weeks.
Yeah.
So one, a final question is, the one, I do worry a little bit in that, you know, we're doing this kind of ad hoc, there's extra money this time around, but what happens, you know, next year, we don't have any more money, and you can only do one school, right? So it's back down to $15,000. I mean, what's the, there's this, there's the sustainability issue for me as well, which is, you don't want to start something you can't continue, because then that becomes a erratic program.
Yeah, I also would like to express that we want to be careful how we, that we don't engage in a discussion here. It's almost like we're going over a proposal again that may have substantive programmatic changes, so it's not really what you might have reviewed, so I just want to.
Yeah, no, but what the question I have is, you know, is specific to the $4,000. You know, you give $4,000, you start one 10-week program in a second school, and then, let's say hypothetically, next year, there isn't as much, there's, you know, back, you're back down to the, let's say, some sort of reduced amount. You know, now all of a sudden, you're pulling back from that school because you can't pay for it. That can be problematic as well.
But that's, that's happened with other programs, where in fact, we keep reducing, reducing, and we had some that pulled out this year, because the amount that we were able to give them, they couldn't function on. I, I'm not an expert, expert on counseling, but I've certainly been around it long enough and worked with the schools long enough and been, and been a counselor, that I know that it, and it's a given in all school districts in the state, that counseling is a dire need. We're lucky to have what we have here in Glendale, and we have CDBG funding, funds at in Burbank, and we can start the same thing. We've got a good, we've got a, just, I think it's a superb program, and not giving it a chance when we have the opportunity.
Yeah, well, I think that part of what happens here is, and again, I was sitting here at the hearing, so I would rely on both of you to go down this path, but my take on this is that the staff's recommendation is trying to reflect the general consensus and the direction of the committee back in February. This seems to be a change. I mean, I appreciate CASP, I mean, I pushed hard for CASP two years ago to get funding again, because we felt he was so strong, I really do. It's not a commentary on the program. But in terms of what happened here in February is what I'm concerned about, and making sure that we, as a committee, do follow the same direction that, where we started back in February. Is there any more questions for Mr.?
And my thinking was that youth is a priority. I think this youth program is the best there is. I think is the one with the most demonstrated need, and we're funding it fairly. So, you know, if we could get a little bit more, I would like to do that.
Well, we can have that discussion.
But if this discussion can go on, thank you.
No, no, we will. I just want to make sure that we.
In answer to Mr. Armenian's questions, you know, this $4,000 will be the little light, little hope, that we can go to another organization saying, listen, we have a $4,000. Will you give us another $4,000 for 10 weeks? Then we will go to the other organization, probably. But if we have nothing, it's more difficult to go, for us to go to a second one or a third one. This is just, just to let you know that, yes, this will give a hope and a start point to go to the next one.
Thank you. Could you please fill out a card before you leave? Thank you. Okay, we close.
I have a question of staff. So in this sort of case, you know, we gave, we decided our funding, as was noted before, at a certain level, with this sort of incremental amount to whichever, any organization, how does the tracking, do you guys adjust, let's say if CASP were to get an extra four and start an extra part of the program, I mean, does that all, how does that change all the paperwork that's been done at this point, in terms of how you track the progress, the measurement, and all those things?
Well, Committee Armenian, Members of the Committee, it doesn't change anything other than, again, your recommendation, if that's what I understand, is for CASP to add one 10-week session, which would be required as far as their contract, and have a 10-week session, as Ruben mentioned, then, then that's to be the direction. We would work with whichever organization you select to adjust whatever goals they may do. And again, it just asks recognition, recognition of what happened last time, and it's just, again, the recommendation based on advisory committee's input the last meeting, and it's up to the committee to make whichever recommendations.
The council makes the final decision anyway.
It's strongly based on the committee's recommendation, and so it's.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I respect that you were not at the last meeting, you're just trying to walk the line here in terms of guiding us on this decision. The point you brought up, it's not lost on me, in terms of, I don't want to all of a sudden change directions based on, you know, just because certain members were not able to make it here today. I'm not trying to surprise them in any way, you know, in terms of changing directions of a motion that we passed at the last meeting. I could go either way on this, to be honest with you, but I also take seriously respecting the wishes when we had a full committee here, present.
But that's why we have a special committee meeting, again.
Yep.
And so.
But we had made a motion at the last one that gave some guidance to staff, you know, because we knew that there was the strong possibility that there would be some adjustments in the funding.
If I may, and based on the last meeting you had, which was where all the presentations
and all the proposals and all the data, all the program descriptions were fresh in your mind, the direction, we interpreted that the direction was, if funds were to become available, these would be some of our top priorities. And so we were trying to reflect that, and we're trying to be expedient, because the annual plan is due to HUD, and we have to go to City Council. The right way to approach this would have been to probably do an abbreviated RFP, and have each organization take a fair shot and submit, maybe even still with parameters from the committee members, but each organization submit what they'd be able to do with an extra $4,000, how they would, how would it impact their outcomes, how many additional persons they'd be able to serve, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, so we're trying, so we fared the easiest, most expedient way, and still be fair, and still reflect the input from the advisory committee would be to divide the funds in this manner, and to absorb the cut on the two city programs, which we've done. And so that's what we're trying to achieve right now.
Yeah, and I guess the, and what you're really saying, Mr. Duran, is similar to what we did with the three $5,000 allocations. Remember, when we had that extra amount, we did an abbreviated RFP, and it was based on actual proposals back. I guess that's a lesson learned for me, in that maybe in the, in the future, we put some parameters around extra dollar amounts that might come available, and kind of how we guide ourselves.
Could also be a question on the RFP, when it goes out, for them to consider, and give us a little bit of a heads up if it should happen.
Right, right.
Okay, and I, and thank you for saying that, for, I do appreciate, like I said, I'd like to go along with the committee. If there's going to be a substantive change here, I'm certainly going to support that, because it's us who are here in the committee today. But I'm certainly not taking the lead on it, because I wasn't participating, and so I'm going by my analysis of what I saw on TV, basically.
Well, I think this discussion helps with next year's proposals and groups that come and make their presentations, and it was an excellent presentation that everybody made, and I was real, real impressed with CASP. And maybe you said they didn't get it the first year, and they got some the second year, so maybe next year, they'll get the full funding.
Oh, yeah, they went through a period where they were not funded, and it was a very difficult decision that year, I do recall that, and.
To me, it's not a difficult decision. I don't understand not being funded. And so, anyway, that's how I feel, and they know that's how I feel.
Okay. Any other comments, or can somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt staff's recommendations on the $4,000.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a recommendation and a motion and a second. Rocco?
Committee Members Armenian?
Yes.
Mark Carrion is absent. Ramirez?
Yes.
Hason is absent. Chair Olivares?
Yes. Thank you, for those who showed up, always.
The next item is number four, committee staff comments.
Any comments?
I have one comment. I brought up this issue at the last, one of our last sessions, I can't remember, it was that Friday session or the Monday session, but I checked again to get today, and this Verdugo Housing Corporation is still showing as a suspended corporation, which is the, basically, the owner of the facility that Door of Hope runs. Has there been any progress on that, or any?
Yes, Committee Armenian and Members of the Committee, we are aware that's still an issue, however, we understand that it's, it's possible that, from what we understand, is a state issue where income taxes were returned to the state, and they misplaced them, and they're having to re-search and try to find them. Unfortunately, the state, it is taking a while. We believe we tracked it down to 2009 income tax form, supplementary form that needs to be turned in, and it was not recorded by the state. However, the attorneys for. However, the attorneys for Verdugo Housing Corporation are working with the state to resolve that. It appears to be a paperwork issue. State claimed they never received it, and Verdugo Housing Corporation has copies saying they did turn it in. So, it's just a matter of updating the files.
Have income tax returns been filed for more recent years?
Yes, those were all up to date, from what we understand. We're verifying everything that from that point on, but right now, the issue is just that one year.
And because of that one year, the corporation was suspended by the Secretary of State?
Yes. For even a day late, they automatically flag those corporations. And again, any corporation, nonprofit or for-profit, for a non-submital, what's called a 990, the income tax form. So, we understand it's a paper issue, and we're trying to verify with Verdugo Housing Corporation that they have, in fact, are up to date and submitted all their paperwork.
Yeah, I mean, something... Sorry, I'm not a lawyer, but it... Something doesn't make sense to me in that if they've filed income tax returns on more recent years, but there's one past year where they haven't, you know, they're obviously... The tax account or the ID, tax ID account, the corporation number, is active in that the state is receiving income tax returns under those numbers, but yet, when you go on the Secretary of State, it's still showing suspended. So, just a little bit... It's odd. Anyway, I'm sure staff is pursuing it, but...
Yeah, no, and I do have a question regarding, I guess, procedure here, and I appreciate your following up on these things. Is this the appropriate forum for that discussion? Should this be handled in a different way? I'm going to rely on staff to tell us.
Chairman Libares, committee members, it should be a very brief comment. Yeah, we really need to limit our comments under this section of the agenda. It is... This issue is being looked at, and Mr. Carrion and I are receiving emails on almost a daily basis between the attorney and the accountant of Verdugo Housing Corporation. So, we do know that they're working on it, and they fully understand it's a concern and that something needs to be addressed.
In the future, when we have concerns of this nature, is it something that one should request to be agendized for discussion, or...
We discussed it. It's kind of a follow-up on...
If there's follow-up, our plan was to email each committee member the follow-up, and so we're still planning to do that.
No, this, for your benefit, this came... I brought this up in the process of the RFPs because we're giving... Essentially, when we allocate money to Door of Hope, we are allocating money for the renovation of a building. Building is owned by Verdugo Housing Corporation.
I'm familiar with it entirely.
Yeah, my research of that, I came... I stumbled across that because I was trying to understand who Verdugo Housing Corporation was. I stumbled across this issue. When I brought it up, they were not aware of it.
And that's a very different situation than most of the ones we see, where the way their arrangement is taking place, who owns the building and all that, I understand. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Christian Essencia is opening this week.
Correct, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have sent invitations to the committee members for the Essencia opening celebration on Friday for the committee members to attend. I don't believe we've gotten any RFPs yet from the committee. It certainly is a very, well, CDBG-involved project. A CDBG fund provided $2 million in CDBG funds for the acquisition of rehab to a Section 108 loan, and we've also been involved with some acquisition of another project. So, very much a CDBG project, and it's going to be a very nice ceremony recognizing the city and the committee and HUD for funding the project, as well as a private investment from another source. We hope that you could attend.
That's Friday at 10 o'clock.
10:00 a.m. Please, RFP with Iris, and then we will give you parking arrangements, very tight parking.
Okay, I will definitely be there. Mr. Armenian, you think you can join us?
I have to look at my schedule. As of last time I checked, I couldn't, but I will double-check.
Okay. Okay, anything else? No? Thank you very much.
The City Council meeting is what date again?
For the record, City Council meeting is proposed for May 13, Tuesday, at 3:00 p.m. It's a City Council Housing Authority meeting. It's afternoon meeting. It involves the CDBG program as well as the homeless programs and housing programs, which is why it's on the City Council Housing Authority agenda. These recommendations that you provided will be in that report, and we'll certainly like to thank the committee at that time for their efforts and involvement in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Will we adjourn?
Adjourn. Thank you very much. Thank you, committee members, for being here.